I'd like to call this November 26th Council Budget Meeting the order. Before we get started, we just have a quick presentation from the theater. Is that Amy?
Thank you. Hello, hello. Hello. Well, as you know, thirty-six years ago, the Grundy Foundation bought a theater. And, working with Len Snyder and the Foundation and the Council to get everything together, we opened Bristol Riverside Theater thirty-three years ago. As most of you may know, or may not know, we could not have done it without the support of Council. And I just want to thank you all so much. After thirty-three years, Keith and I will be stepping down at the end of the season. So, I wanted you guys to be the first to know what direction the theater is taking. So, normally, Keith Baker would be standing next to me, but right now, he's rehearsing American Christmas Songbook, which I hope you all will come and see. Anyway, so, we're stepping down, and I am very sure that you know figuring out where we were headed from here was not an easy, it was a very complex decision. And about that decision, I think my partner, Keith Baker, had the best words to say about the solution. It's perfect, it's organic, it's what it should be. And with that, I would like to introduce you to the new co-producing artistic directors who will be coming on board this summer, and introduce you to Ken Kesar, and reintroduce you to Amy Kesar, who was our managing director for five years.
Hi, everybody. Thank you. I quickly wanted to tell you how delighted I am to be back at Bristol Riverside. Over the last ten-plus years, it's been eleven years, it's just kind of amazing to me. We've really come to think of 120 Radcliffe Street as our other home. And I couldn't be more excited to be doing this with Ken, and happier to have been selected. So, thank you.
Ken is your brother?
Yes. Can't you see the family resemblance?
Yeah, no. Part of what makes this job so attractive to us is the relationship that the theater has with Bristol Borough. We're really excited to get to know you, and introduce ourselves, and to explore our relationship further going forward. I think the strong connection between the theater and the borough is part of the legacy that Keith and Susan have, you know, have created, and we look forward to still building on that. So, we look forward to meeting you, working with you, and we hope you'll all stop by and say hello come June when we take our place there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'd just like to say that I'm glad to have you back.
Thank you.
That we worked very well together as Council. And, but I just want to say, Susan, to you and Keith, I mean, a lot of people don't realize the struggles and how hard it was in the beginning to get this done. And I give a lot of credit to the Council that sat here before us, that had the vision to work with the Grundy Foundation to turn that into what it is today. But, you know, we only could do so much as Council. It was really you and Keith who put your life into that theater. And I don't think it's ever going to be forgotten what you did for this town and for that theater. So, on a personal note, I want to thank you for everything you did.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Amy, thank you. If you need anything, we're here every month.
[laughing]
Okay. We're here tonight for our budget, and as I said in November, our November meeting, that we balanced the budget with no tax increase. I know there's a lot of talk and things going around town, but I don't understand what people don't get. But I want to open up, first of all, public participation on this side of the room. So, anybody want to go to the podium and speak on anything? Please do so. Mr. Bixler.
Good evening. Ken Bixler, Cleveland Street. Just a quick question for you. You said, "What's all the hype going about the budget?" I thought I heard you say at the last meeting it wasn't going to be a tax increase. I wasn't a hundred percent sure, but I thought I heard you say that. My question to you is, in years past, I know you advertised, publicly advertised, the possibility of an earned income tax and the increase of the service tax, which you're not going to do this year. In years past, when you -- has that been on the budget agenda as well?
It wasn't on the agenda. We discussed it, and we could have voted on it that night. I don't know why the manager, maybe you could explain. Are we talking about tonight?
This is the first time it was on the agenda then, as a motion?
It was on last year.
It was on the agenda?
It was on the year before. The last three years, it's been advertised.
I know it's been advertised, but I was, my question was, was it as a motion on the agenda? And you say it was the last couple of years.
It was on the agenda. I don't, I don't remember ever seeing it on an agenda. I thought that it was, we never had a budget meeting tonight and had a voting meeting tonight. I don't remember that. I think the reason for this is, we're really pressed for time, and I think Mr. Dillon scheduled this meeting tonight because if we adopt either one of these, and they're not off the table right now, even though we have a balanced budget, something I'd like to talk to Council about. But, he, we had to have this meeting tonight because it has to be done before the first of December, if you are enacting either one of these two taxes.
So, they're not off the table, you're saying? Okay.
No, it's up to Council. They're on the agenda tonight to be voted on.
But you said the budget's balanced, though?
Balanced. Budget is balanced.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's it.
Okay. Anybody else on this side of the room? Address for the record, please.
First name is Kim, last name is Runner, R-U-N-N-E-R, and the address is 300 Mill Street. Never been here before, obviously. So, what I want to talk about is the occupational privilege tax. I know that it's taken out every year, and it was $10.
Right.
And now, you're going to move it to $52.
You're proposing to move it to $52?
Right. You just, that's a lot. I mean, it's not a lot, but it is. When people in the borough live paycheck to paycheck, and that one lump sum is going to come out in their first paycheck, that's just a lot of money. That's like taking food off of somebody's table.
Well, it's, if you make under $12,000, you don't pay it. Do you know that?
I did not, but...
So, people that are, like you says, working for not a lot of wages, or waitresses, or things like that, helping out, they don't pay the tax if they make under $12,000?
The thing that I would propose is, if it is going to go to the $52, to maybe take it out maybe quarterly, or even to a dollar a week. I was at a company before where it was $52, and they took a dollar a week, so you didn't even notice it.
I, I'll be honest with you, I don't know how it works. We don't collect the money, right? It goes through Burkeimer?
Burkeimer.
Burkeimer collects it, which they do now, they collect the $10. How do you, you, you...
I work in the borough also.
Burke, or you have a business?
No, I work in the borough.
You work, so how do they do it now? Do they take...
It's once, it's the first paycheck of the year.
They take $10 out?
Right. And it's just $10, so that's like nothing. But $52...
Right. Well, out of the $10, five goes to the school, five goes to the borough, right now.
Okay.
So, it's, the Council's, we need to discuss some of this tonight. Can it be done a dollar a week? I don't know. I really can't answer that question.
I mean, I know it's been forty years since there's been an increase, so there is, you know, it should be increased, but that is a huge increase to, for people that are living paycheck to paycheck, and like I said, it would probably take food out of their mouths for that one week.
Well, we're trying not to hurt anybody with this, and most of the people that work here that don't live in Bristol will pay this tax.
Okay.
See, that's, that's the plus, that you're not hurting the senior citizen, or you're not hurting anybody that's on fixed incomes, because if they are, they're exempt from paying this tax.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
So, just to let you know, but it's a good question. We can find out if it passes, how, how it's got to be done.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Just, just to follow up what she said, does that $12,000 threshold apply to the EIT as well, or is it just the service tax?
I can't answer that. The $12,000 is, deals with the local service tax, earned income tax, deals with the earned income.
Right. So, it doesn't matter? You can make $1,000 in, in a year, and it would come out then?
A half a percent, or 1% that Council elects to adopt it.
But there's no threshold like the service tax, though?
No.
Right? No. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else on this side of the room? Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything? Okay, and it's public participation. So, let's talk about the budget. I mean, I don't think there's any reason to go line by line and page by page. Am I correct?
Correct.
Like, to me, it's like coming into a test, like I'm a college student, I come in, and the professor already gave me the answers to the test, so, I mean...
What's that, Tony?
It's like, it's like, the college professor already gave me the answers to the test, I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to get upset and try to fight it so I can do more work. If it's, if it's balanced, I mean, I'm ready to move on.
Well, that's what I'm hearing. I mean, we didn't vote on a budget. Are there things in the budget that we feel we could change or save money on, or...
Well, we, I do this every year, so, I mean, if it's, if it's done and it's balanced...
Well, what would there, what would be in there that you want to see not in there? Or would like to add to it?
I mean, I mean, these are things that I've talked about every year that we do it, so, I mean, it doesn't go anywhere. I mean, what I'm saying is, if it's done, all right, I'm ready to, to move on, and that's, that's adopted and go forward.
So, just so you know, I just want to throw a couple of numbers out there, so maybe everybody can understand. The, the tax money that this borough collects in 2020 is going to be $2,725,200. You just compare that to the police budget. The police budget for 2020 is $3,160,877, which is a difference of $435,677. Tony?
Yeah, I think that's just the taxes for the general fund. I think total tax is more than that, isn't it?
Yeah, we're, we're just talking about the general fund.
Oh, okay.
I mean, there's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different budgets that deals with the real estate taxes. We're just dealing with the general fund at this time. So... What I'm getting at, there's a difference of $435,000. The other two major problems we have, and I spoke about this last year, was the pension funds. Right now, we didn't pay all of the money last year for the first time, and I foresee us paying everything this year. So, the two pension funds, the borough's contributing $853,449, of, are supposed to contribute about $1,677, which is a difference in thirteen, in nineteen's budget of $213,814. And in 2020, we're going to be sure, our end, $330,740. So, I said this last year, and I'm going to say it again this year, so, eventually, something has to give somewhere. I mean, things can't keep going up, and we just can't keep, and true, there's, the taxes are taxed out, so there's no more tax, when, when people go on Facebook, Mr. Bixler, and say, "Taxes are going up," or "We're applying for more," it's not true, because we can't raise taxes. I, I mean, I don't know how mu, how...
Real estate taxes.
Right. We, we're taxed out.
Right.
So, we can't raise taxes anymore. It's disheartening to say, "Your taxes are going up," or, you know, "The solicitor's going to go in for another five mil increase." It's not another five, it's the same increase we've been asking since 2001, fourteen? It's the same five mils. So, I don't understand what any, what a lot of people don't get, but I really don't care. I'm trying to balance this budget and, and doing what's right. The 1% service tax, I'm not in favor of. I think that if we can balance the budget, look, eventually, it's probably going to come into play, whether we do it or somebody else does it. I mean, it's just a, it's, you can't keep raises, and insurance goes up, and everything else goes up, and not raise taxes. So, eventually, something has to give. The $52 will generate about $150,000 over the next couple of years, which will help some of this pension money. Now, that's a decision Council has to make. We keep it as-is, where we don't pay the full amount, two years in a row, or we try to pay, we, because this money only can be used, this forty's extra, this money that we're raising, only can be used for like police, fire, rescue, that. It can't be just put in to go pay somebody's salary. Am I correct?
Correct.
So, that's the only thing that would do, is help with some of the police pension funds and all. Now, in the non-uniform contract, we moved the non-uniform to 8% of their pay. So, they're contributing 8% towards their pension, which is the max they can contribute by state law. The police are at 6%, and I think that they have no problem, and I could be wrong, going to 8% also, which they will be maxed out as much as they can pay. So, although they're trying to do their part, the police and the non-uniform, it's still not enough to, to, to make these pension contributions. So, I'm starting my, I think, nineteenth year in January, or twentieth? I don't even remember. But, anyway, we have made every pension contribution from the day this Council took over. Last year was the first time we could not make the pension contribution, and it's probably not going to happen again in 2020, but I think you're going to see that a lot throughout the state of Pennsylvania, because the pension funds are just getting out of control, where you can't keep putting this kind of money into it. Lorraine?
I want to know if, if the money we didn't pay last year, $213,840, $200,13,000, will we have to pay, will that accrue interest as well? Will we have to pay interest on that as well? We will. So, and then, if we don't pay it this year, we're going to have to pay interest as well. So, that's, that's a concern.
Yeah, it is a concern.
Where's the $213? Where's the...
I wrote it down when he said it. That's why I came up with it.
Add up the two pension funds.
And then, $330 this year, you said.
Right.
So, if we're paying interest on that money, that's quite a bit.
Well, somebody sitting here could tell me where to get it.
I'm just...
No, I'm just saying.
I'm just making a statement.
I have no problem. That's why we're here tonight.
So, are, I'm looking at it different. I guess what I'm looking at on page four of eight of the general fund.
Page five?
Page four of eight on the general fund?
Four of eight?
Yeah, four of eight. Line of 410-160-01, it's the Police Department Pension Fund. I'm reading that's $450,703.
That's what we're going to, that's what we're paying.
Right. That's what we're saying we're going to pay, but last year, how much did we pay of that?
Now, I think that's what we're paying, correct?
That's what we paid.
That's what we paid.
But that's not the...
$2,000. Okay. And then, we're budgeting the same thing. So, how much more do we owe?
I think it was supposed to be $581,703 for this year. Am I right, Angie?
What's the difference?
About last year.
Now, this year and the next year, $603.
Okay. So, it was $581,703, which we were $130,000 short in the police last year, right? And in the non-uniform, we were $103,000 short last year.
Those added together.
Right?
Right.
Which, that's what made it the...
$213.
Right.
So, we're not, like, last year's budget wasn't balanced, so...
It was balanced for what we paid.
Well, for what you paid, but it's, to me, it's not balanced if we stole, we didn't pay what we were projected to pay.
And we made that statement last year.
Oh, yeah?
So, I'm making it again this year. If you have a way to pay this pension fund, that's what I'm trying to find out. Tell me how to do it. Because I, I would definitely would like to know how you want to do it.
This service tax of $52, how much would that be? A year, a hundred and...
This year, maybe 111. Next year, they're estimating 155 or something. You got a paper on it.
So, that, that could help with...
And if they go to 8%, that's going to help too. But it's 2% more of their payroll.
Mm-hmm.
How much is payroll, Angie, for the police? I mean, what's its...
$1,210,000.
That million is what, $20,000?
1.2 mil.
2% is what, $23,000?
Yeah, that's not counting overtime, that's not counting holiday, that's not counting court time.
That's the base.
That's the base, that's the base salary.
$20,000. It's like, what, $20,000?
Okay.
I've had some conversations with Mr. Dillon, and I think it'd be good if he can sum it up on the, on the service tax, the $52, shed some light on, on Council and the public on how this thing works.
Before I, these bullet points for the local service tax, I'd just like to touch on the earned income tax. There's fifty-four municipalities in Bucks County. Nine do not collect the earned income tax. So, are we talking 35, 45 municipalities? Of the 54 municipalities in the county, do charge and do collect the earned income tax. I think in time, unless we can figure out different types of revenue, I think you're going to have to eventually go to earned income tax, in my humble opinion. And I think it's to this Council's credit that all these years you have not raised taxes and haven't charged that earned income tax, because it is, it is a significant tax. But again, 45 municipalities in the county charge the EIT tax, nine do not. And let me just touch on three of the nine that do not. Tully Town and Falls Township. I believe Falls Township has over $250 million in their bank account because of the landfill. And Tully Town has been giving out $6,000 a year to their residents or property owners for the last number of years, because they've had so much money. The other large municipality that doesn't charge it is Lower Makefield. They have a tremendous tax base. Their monthly real estate transfer tax is about $170,000. More than what we get in, in a year. It's just, that's one of the reasons why they don't charge the EIT, their tax base is so good. Let me touch on the local service tax. As Mr. De Giuseppe mentioned, it can only be used for the police. Estimated revenue for the first year is $110,000. Currently, there, we do charge $5, and the school district charges $5. So, it would be an increase of $47 a year. Am I right, Bill?
Forty-two.
Forty-two, you're right. So, it's not 47, it's 42, because the school districts. Number two, those who make less than $12,000 do not pay the local service tax. When I say it can only be used for the police, I note, put an asterisk there. I noted, just like Mr. De Giuseppe said, the general fund tax revenue for 2020 is based on 35 mils, which is the maximum permitted. And that revenue is projected at $2,595,000. That $2,595,000 does not cover the Police Department budget, which is projected for 2020. And again, we'd only be funding 12 officers, when in fact, we will have 13. That budget projection is $3,67,621. Also, as was mentioned, there is no increase in wages in this budget for the police. We are in the middle of negotiations, very well may wind up in arbitration. Hopefully, we do not wind up in arbitration, that we can settle beforehand. But also, the unfunded police pension contribution projected at $450,000. So, so, it's quite a, you know, void there. The second page is the letter that we get from Burkeimer. They are the ones that collect the tax. They have access to the state income tax records, so that's why I think they are so thorough, and they do collect the tax. So, I think our revenues in this budget are, you know, they're certainly not, some, some could say that they're very optimistic. Hopefully, they will come in, and our expenses, we've certainly not put in expenses that, to meet our minimum municipal obligation for the police pension fund, as well as the other employees. So, I, I'd like to recommend that, well, let me add again, 15 municipalities do not collect the local service tax in the county, out of the 54. So, 15 municipalities do not collect the local service tax. Of these 15 municipalities, 10 municipalities collect the earned income tax. Certainly, if you went to the earned income tax, we would not have to charge the local service tax, in my opinion, and maybe you could even lower the real estate taxes somewhat. Currently, 98% of the residents of Bucks County pay either an earned income tax and/or the local service tax. So, 98% of all the residents of the county pay either one or the other. So... Well, I do need to, Tony, how do you feel about it?
I mean, for me, it sounds like we need to have everybody here to discuss it. To me, it sounds like we're not...
Greg's coming, he's, has back to school tonight.
Mm-hmm.
The problem is, I wanted to cancel this meeting and do it next week with our regular meeting, but we have to have it done before December 1st. Am I right?
Correct. Yeah. Cancel the conference.
Can we table the, everything but the budget? No?
No. The budget, we're not worrying about the budget right now. It's a matter of this...
Okay.
$52 in this earned income tax.
All right.
And to me, with the earned income tax, it, it doesn't sound like a major kind of obstacle to get over, but it's just, to me, it's, it's a small Band-Aid. I mean, it's not even a good Band-Aid. You know what I mean? It's a hard...
Earned income tax?
The earned income?
No, the...
Service.
Yeah, the service tax, is what I'm talking about, yeah.
Well, that's why I'm here, Tony. If you have any suggestions or solutions... Well, that's why I'm here, Tony. If you have any suggestions or solutions to this budget, tell me how to do it.
Well, these are, these are the things, it's not that you have a solution, it's just, as a whole, I mean, these are the things that we've been doing every year, and it's not going to stop. So, it's like, we're already at our max, like you said, we can't tax anymore legally, we can't even tax anymore. So, we have to go every year to get that extra five mils that's there. Not additional, just five mils, just so we can, you know, balance our budget. So, now, we're at the top, plus the five. Now, we're going to put a Band-Aid with the service tax, and then the, you know, earned income tax. And personally, it doesn't affect me, because I already get it taken out of my paycheck. But, you know, I'm looking at it just as, as a whole for all the residents, you know what I mean? And, you know, we have to, at some point, we got to, we got to figure out, you know, not, not to be able to spend so much money. And it's going to, it's going to take serious cuts, serious changes. And, and we bring it up every year, but every time I bring stuff up, it falls on deaf ears.
Let's put it this way, you've been sitting here eight years.
Mm-hmm.
What can you come up with, or what did you come up with over eight years, that can help this budget, because ninety-five percent of this budget is contractual? So, there is no wasteful spending in this budget that I see anywhere.
Right, it's not to be, it's, it's not to, you know, kind of be adversarial with you, it's just, there are things in there that I've brought up every year.
Like what? Can you just mention a couple?
Sure, we, I brought up the Do-Op. There's thirty thousand that we spend on Do-Op, which I think is a great event, but I think we should charge for it. If people, if it's so great, people will pay to go there. You know what I mean? Whatever it is. And we could do other things, you know, with, with not just the Do-Op. You can have events down there where you're making money. And then, the second thing is, we talked about, even when the last police, you know, the last police contracts that we talked about. You guys decided that, you know, we're going to knock it down to, you know, the most, or knock it down to so many officers, and we're not going to go above a certain number. Then, I think in the next month, the next month after we decided that, you guys changed and hired another full-time officer. So, now, we, you know, those are the types of things that you, you have to be... If, if you, if you're talking about being tough and making cuts, you have to do it. I know it's not, it's not easy, and it's not, you know, it's not something that anybody wants to do, but the taxpayers are the ones that are, are, are making the sacrifices. We have to, you know, those are the types of things that, you know, there's a lot of stuff in there that you could chop down.
Well, what else? Write them down, so I can respond to you.
Well, here's the thing about it, it's, it's not to respond, there's nothing that I can do, because as, as one council person, because these are the same things I've brought up, and it's the majority that you guys that are in the majority have to make the decision, that's all.
Not telling us how we can...
I've, I've done it, done it over eight years, different things.
You talked about...
All right, so you got the, the one thing, all right, so Do-Op, you have the Do-Op. We pay our, or, or maintenance guys, they're the highest paid people, I mean, maintenance people in the county. There's nobody that gets paid more than our, you know, than our, our maintenance guys. So, I mean, there's money there somewhere, depending on how it works, you know. Those are all contractual things, but when, when it comes to negotiating, you know, you have to be tough, you know what I mean? And you have to, you, you know, you can't just say, well, we're going to do this and, and then not do it.
Do you vote for that, that police, that contract?
What I'm saying is, I don't, I don't mean to be adversarial, you're asking me questions, and I'm telling...
I know, but I'm trying, I'm not either. I'm saying, you voted for the contract.
I don't remember.
And I asked you to be part of the negotiations, and you said no.
Oh, for the last one, yeah. Well, I was going through a, a bunch of issues.
But I'm saying, so, you say no.
I didn't say no.
You say no, but then you, you're not happy with it. But let me just go back to two things. The Do-Op, first of all, doesn't cost you thirty thousand dollars, because we raise money, and it doesn't come out of the general fund. So, that has nothing to do with the, the police budget or anything like that. It comes out of the recreation fund. Okay, so, if we eliminate that, it has nothing to do with balancing this general fund budget.
And these are the things that I'm talking about, everything that you bring up.
But what I'm saying to you, if we eliminate the, the Do-Op tomorrow, what does it do for the general fund?
But that's what I'm, that's the point...
No, I'm asking you, maybe...
That's the point I'm trying to make to you, because anything that I bring up isn't going, it's cumulative, it's going to be a number of things put together that may change.
Well, you're not making sense, Tony.
Sure does.
I'm asking you, if we eliminate the Do-Op tomorrow...
All of them say this, it's not the big...
General fund.
It is this majority, this majority's decision.
Well, you can play this game all night, but you're not answering the question.
All right, well, let's go. It's not a game, number one, there's not a game, because there's no game when you're, you know, you're in the minority. I'm not playing a game, there's no game to be played. It's not like I'm trying to be, you know, council president and take over.
Well, you talk about the Do-Op every year, that it affects the budget. It doesn't affect the budget.
Because it's one of the things that we do, that's what I'm saying. It's one of the things that we do that adds up at the end of the day to save taxpayers' money. You know what I mean? Do, do you agree that we have the highest paid maintenance crew in the county?
I don't know, I never looked into that.
Well, I'm sure you did.
But... Go ahead, Lauren.
And I feel bad, because Dave Gerard isn't here tonight, but wasn't this one of the things that Dave Gerard was interested in, the local service tax? Didn't he want us to do this?
I thought it was the earned income tax.
Oh, was he earning, all right, I just wanted this...
I don't remember.
It's a shame he's not here, because I know he was really...
But let me get back to this, to this Do-Op. You eliminate the Do-Op, it does nothing for the general fund budget. And if you eliminated that twenty thousand dollars a year into the, the fund, and you, I don't even know if you could drop it a tenth of a mil, that may, may do something. Going back to the police contract, you said, we said we were going to stay down to a certain number. And we just talked about that in executive session tonight, that the contract reads ten full-time police officers, and the only way you're going to get to ten is through retirement. Is I tell you that tonight back there?
Right, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about when the negotiations were done, when we were finished with the police contract, the last one that came up. Just so it's clear, we were talking about, we were not going to be hiring any more police officers, because in order for us to get down to that max number, that minimum number of ten that we're talking to, we weren't going to hire any more full-time officers. And then, within a couple of months, and I remember Mr. Crotrochi saying it, that he was, you know, he kind of, if he could go back and change, he would. Because those are the types of things that aren't easy, that are, you know, that are tough to do, but...
Well, do you know why that motion was made that night?
I don't, no. I, I'd like to correct it, but you're right, you're right, I did say, but I didn't say, I would, if I could take it back, I would change it. I did not say that.
Well, I, sorry for mispronouncing.
No, no, I just, I did, I, I joined and said that we should have another full-time policeman. We had two men, two men that were out almost two years on workman's comp and had no end in sight. We had a murder on Bad Street.
Thank you, thank you.
A block from her home, and a block where I've spent my, most of my life. And summertime was coming about, the policeman, the chief, everybody felt a little intimidated, and we were running out of, at that point, part-timers. So, I agreed to do it.
And it was the right thing to do.
Within, within a year, they forced the, the insurance companies forced the, you know, the policeman back, one was able to stay, the other one still isn't back.
And like I said...
So, is that a mistake? Did that cost us money? Yeah, but the problem is, this town wants police protection, and it's very expensive. So, unless we're willing to say, I'll take less services, we got to raise, we got to raise some more money.
Well, here's...
You said, let people go out and cut, let our people go out and cut Garden Street. Not even our property, but let them do that. That's, that's additional services, correct? And you'd really...
No, that's not, to me, that's not additional services, and I'll explain to you why I believe they're not. Just so you know.
No, no, but that's not something that we're budgeting for.
Can I answer that question? I'll tell you why I don't believe that's additional services, because right now, we pay twelve thousand dollars to somebody to take care of the fields, all right? Twelve thousand dollars a year to take care of the fields, which he does for six months. So, really, he makes two thousand dollars a month. And the, the, the majority of the work of cutting the grass, which takes the most time, he doesn't even do it, it's our borough workers that cut that grass. So, if we paid somebody twelve thousand dollars and had them cut the grass, it would make sense. Then, we would have free up our guys, so they could cut the Garden Street property, and it wouldn't take any more services to do that.
But Tony, can I just say, can I just say something?
That doesn't make sense?
No, it's, it's like you want to bring something else up...
Right.
...to solve the problem, you know, it's that, like...
I don't even, I don't even think, I think we're getting way off base here.
We hire somebody part-time, are we having problems with hiring people part-time anyway with the union? It's a no-win situation.
All I'm saying is, I'm trying to understand how to balance, the budget's balanced, you know, let's not balance.
Mr. Chairman, just, just as a point of interest, I mean, the thing we're talking about, you, you were looking at page four of eight.
Mm-hmm.
Right, there's eight pages in there, that constitutes the whole general fund. That's the only money that we're talking about. We're not talking about recreation, not talking about streetlights.
We're talking about one, listen...
But I'm just saying, let me finish.
Yes.
On those eight pages, if you look at those accounts, they're the only accounts that we can make effective change to, that would change the budget. And for the last four years, you haven't been able to make effective change. One of the reasons is because of contracts. The other reason is that everything goes up over time.
So...
But my, my whole point was, one, page one to eight, that's the only thing that we can talk about in the general fund. It's not recreation, it's not fire, it's the general fund.
Let's, let's talk about the eight pages of the general fund. So, like, for me, in all fairness, I thought we were coming here with a balanced budget. I thought we were just going to vote on it and move forward. This is the same thing that we have every year, and it comes down to always the same question. You ask, what types of things can we do to cut into whatever? And I'm not saying that, you know, cutting the police or cutting whatever, it's... There has to be something that you could do, because you can't continue to tax, right? And the other thing that's not true is, when you guys talk about, that this council, since you've come on, have not raised taxes, is absolutely a lie. Because this council, for when Ralph has taken over as president of this council, taxes have increased probably over a hundred and fifty percent. I mean, that's true, that's not, yeah, that's true, I mean, that's a hundred percent true.
Since I took over, the town went from where it was to this today.
Listen, Ralph, I'm not saying the things that you haven't done aren't good, that's not what I'm saying. All we're talking about taxes.
All right, let me just say something to you.
Yes.
You tell me what you want to cut out of this budget, I'll vote with you to cut it out, and then you tell me how to balance it.
Well, here's the, here's the beauty of it.
Now, you got my support, can't start with the budget.
Here's, the beauty of it is this, if you want to go back and you want to include me and you, we sit down and go through some things, me and you...
No, right now, we can't do it, let's do it in a public meeting.
Because...
Tell me what you want to cut out.
There's not, listen, I came to this meeting thinking we were just...
And I'll support you.
Voting, I thought we were voting on a balanced budget.
We voted on this budget last year, didn't you?
And that has to do with what?
There wasn't a balanced budget last year.
Well, you said it was.
No, I didn't, I said in a public meeting, I'm sure Mr. Bixler has the tapes, he has all my tapes, he's got a file on me like this, I'm sure that he could tell you, and he's your, on your side, that I said, that I, let me finish, that I said that we have a shortfall in the pension funds, and we had fourteen cops, we only budgeted for twelve. That is a fact, and I don't even have to go back and play the tapes, I know what I said. And you voted for that budget. So, we're doing the same thing this year, which is a little bit better than it was last year.
Okay, well, to me, I'm just telling you, from it being in a position, in the minority position...
That has nothing to do with minority or majority.
It has everything to do with it, because, listen, when you can't even get a vaping rule passed, it has everything to do with being in the minority. Because when you can't get somebody to say you can't vape in a building, and you can't get that to pass, there's a, there's a problem where the majority is, I have absolutely, my job right now is just to take information, share it the way I see it, and there's really not much that I could do in terms of change. It's the majority that needs to make those decisions.
You're right. But you said that, about a balanced budget. I will support you in any way you want, you tell me what you have to cut out to balance this budget.
Okay, well, the same thing that you said to Dave Gerard when you went into, with the, the police negotiations of the last contract, is that a hundred percent you're going to go board, and then, what I'm saying is, too much, and I'm not saying, these are tough decisions. You can't go and hire a full-time cop when you just got done telling somebody that's put his neck out there.
And we had two officers go down.
That's what I'm saying.
We had a shooting, so that...
He didn't want to vote for it.
The thing was, either you vote for, for the taxpayers to protect your borough residents, or you let it become a wild west. The decision you have to make sometimes isn't always the decision that everybody's happy with.
No, I agree.
So, I had to make a tough decision to vote for a cop, knowing that we needed him, but we couldn't afford him. I was more concerned with the taxpayers of this town, to protect them than not protect them. So, that's the decision I made. So, if that's the wrong decision in your mind, then, you know...
I agree that it's a tough decision, it's not...
So, you voted no, that was the easy way to go, to say, I'm not voting for him, because I don't want to spend money. We took the position, this is our job to do the right thing, and the right thing was to hire a cop with two cops down and no part-timers.
And listen, that was, that, that whole incident was horrible.
Right.
It was a horrible situation. But just like we said before, making one, hiring one full-time officer was going to do nothing to change that.
It saved us a lot of money.
Nothing, it was going to do nothing to change that incident. It did not, let's be real with it.
We would have had to pay a guy salary time and a half for the entire time them cops were out, instead of hiring a full-timer at a cheaper rate.
And sometimes, the safety of the citizens of this town are more important than any...
Can I do one thing real quick?
Sure.
We need like a three to five-minute recess. Nobody even has to leave if you don't want, I'm just going to call a recess for a couple of minutes. I got to use the bathroom. I gotta use the bathroom, I can't.